Good evening. We're so glad to have you all here tonight. First, I would like to say thank you. Our music was provided by Joel English, student at Blackburn Elementary's Fine Arts Academy. So let's give him a hand. We'll now close our first meeting we had tonight. We'll call this meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM. And we'll move on to the second agenda, a regular board meeting. Thank you all for being here. Although those meetings are open to the public, the meetings that have time for the public to speak is designated, and there is no one signed up to speak tonight. So we're going to move on then to item number three, our welcome and invocation. I'd like to ask Mr. Jeremy Suter to come to the microphone at this time.
Thank you, School Board. Appreciate this opportunity. Let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us another day of life and breath. Thank you for this great school district. Thank you that they care so much for the students, their employees, and this community as well. I pray that you continue to give this board wisdom in everything that they do. Guide this district, and we thank you for a school district that leads by example and sets the bar high. And we pray that they continue to set that standard for other districts as well. We ask all this in your precious name. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you. We're proud to have you and Family Cathedral as partners of our district. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll recognize our Students of the Month. We'll have principals please come forward with their students. Dr. Randall is the ninth grade principal at North Forney High School. Introduce the Secondary Student of the Month, followed by Brittany Hartley. She'll introduce from Claybon Elementary, our Student of the Month as well.
Good evening, board members. Thank you all for having us, and thank you all for being here tonight. We would like to recognize LaShanti Wilson, who is our Student of the Month for North Forney High School's Freshman Center. And if you will indulge me, I just would love to say a couple of quick things her teacher said about us. One started off with great choice. LaShanti Wilson is a dependable student who excels at her classwork with continuous integrity. She is welcoming new students and exhibits quiet leadership majority to have in my class. I would like to express my gratitude for having LaShanti in my Spanish class. She's always engaged and turns in excellent work. And then, as a teacher, you hope every year you have a class full of LaShanties. She's always walks into the room with a smile on her face, and on her best behavior. She's always participates in class discussions, even if she doubts herself a little bit, but she's always right. And her hard work and dedication is very impressive. And the last one, she is a wonderful student who goes above and beyond in her studies, exhibit exceptional citizenship, and will do great things in her future. I want to introduce you all, LaShanti Williams, our North Forney High School Freshman Center Student of the Month.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Terry, and guests. It's my honor to recognize Maddox Dunn, a fourth grader at Claybon Elementary School. Maddox is our Student of the Month, and I'd like to share a few special reasons why we are recognizing this amazing student. Maddox truly is one of the most amazing and joyful children we've ever had the privilege of knowing. We've known Maddox since he started here at Claybon as the cutest, tiniest kindergartner with the biggest smile and the best energy. He brings a special kind of magic to our campus and can brighten anyone's day with his joy and light. He is deeply loved by both students and staff, and it just won't be the same without him next year. Our campus will surely feel a little less bright without his spark and his amazing dance moves. The saying "Why fit in when you were bored to stand out" perfectly sums up Maddox Dunn. His extra chromosome truly means extra special, extra joy, extra light, extra love. Keep being extra Maddox. Keep shining, keep laughing, and keep spreading that incredible joy wherever you go. You've made Claybon a brighter place, and we're all better for knowing you. We can't wait to watch you continue to grow and impact this world in such a positive way.
Would you please? Would you please stand for our pledges?
I pledge allegiance to thee, Father, thy nation under God, on the... a testament, a nation, on God, unindivisible, and indelible, ever and ever.
Honor the Texas Fledge. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one they, under God, one and invisible.
So we hear there's quite a large cheering crew from the Claybon staff here tonight. Would our Claybon staff like to join us for a photo?
That's awesome. Now we'll move on to item number four, acceptance of donations. And Mr. Justin Etherly, Executive Director of Education Foundation, if you would come to the microphone.
I love you guys.
Love you. Bye-bye. Can you top that one, Justin?
No. Okay. All right. All right. Good evening, President Ferris, board members, and Dr. Terry. The Forney Education Foundation established the Innovative Teaching Grant Program in 2008 to recognize and support creative, forward-thinking instructional ideas that have a meaningful impact on students across Forney ISD. Each year, our teachers and staff are invited to submit their proposals for innovative projects, and funding is awarded through a competitive review process. This year, we received 164 grant applications, a remarkable showcase of creativity and commitment from our educators. I'm proud to share the foundation would like to fund 75 of those requests this year. This achievement would not be possible without the incredible support of our Board of Directors, the foundation's grant committee, the collaboration encouragement of Forney ISD leadership, and of course, the continued generosity of our community through the Adopt a Grant program. I would like to extend a special thanks to the following groups and individuals whose contributions helped make this year's award possible: Jackson Middle School PTO, Johnson Elementary PTO, Timmer Middle School PTO, Wilson Elementary PTO, CoServe Charitable Foundation, Trinity Valley Electric Cooperative, the Chides family, the Schaeff family, the Baxter family. On behalf of the foundation, I respectfully ask that the board accept this year's total awarded amount of $149,305.83 for the Innovative Teaching Grant Program. Thank you for your continued partnership in supporting our educators and students.
Thank you, Mr. Etherly. The board, you've heard of the nomination. Do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we accept the donation as presented.
Mr. Johnson, do I have a second? In this statement, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next, we'll continue at item five with some student recognitions. Mr. Mario Leonard, Director of Fine Arts, will speak to us.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and board. I believe we have a handful of students that are going to join us in here. It is with great pleasure we recognize the Forney High School Band once again for their participation in the state marching contest. As you know, we've been going to that contents that contents and contest since 2009. Marching band is and continues to evolve so much every year. It is basically a musical on the field these days. These kids started, well, the staff started about a year ago on this show. We have camps the last week of school, and these students start to show up the last week of July or so into August, when we can start the show on August 1st. Our band had another great showing for the second time in 6A. The top 42 bands performed this last Monday, and our group finished 20th. They take the top 14 to finals. When we were at 5A, we were doing well, and now 6A, we're up there with the big, big schools. So other things to share this year, I don't know if our cheerleader is here from the leadership team or not. But if you saw the show, there's basically a part of the show where there's someone doing backflips. She is in band, but she's also a cheerleader. And then we have some of the JV Drill Team here, possibly. And that was Star Dancers. And that was a new addition as well to the show. So many thanks to everyone involved, from the staff, to feeder directors, boosters, campus admin, district admin, parents, the drill team, lesson teachers, school board, and especially these students. Join me in congratulating the members of the Forney High School Band for their 6A State Marching Contest participation.
I'm sorry. No, you're fine. Good to see you. Good to see you again.
Our next item will be some staff recognitions, and Kristin Zastul, Chief of Communications, will introduce them.
It is my honor every year to get to come before you and recognize our veterans. These are staff members and board members from our community who gave service to our country and now have chosen to come and serve our community. So we will put all of their names up on the board this evening. Several of them could not be here with us, but I do want to call out a few. We gave them certificates when they came in, so if we missed you on your way in, I do have your certificate up here. So the ones joining us tonight are Anson Combs, who served with the Army. Combs, did he sneak out the back? Mr. John Chase. He's snuck it over here. Mr. Ken Coleman with the Navy. Dr. Michael Idamudia with the Marines. Royal Thornton with the Army. And this evening, we have one additional special member that we would like to honor. Ms. Linda Jacobs is here this evening, and we will be honoring her and her husband tomorrow to special groundbreaking. And Jim Jacobs, who served on our board, is also a veteran with the Army, so we do have a special certificate for you. We did not receive that name before. Oh, yes, I do. Yes, I do. I'm sorry, sorry. I do. We might have missed her on the way in. Hang on. Oh, I don't have it in here. Yes, Letitia McLean, we do. Did you get your certificate? You already have it. Come on up. I'm so sorry. I just missed it on my list. Yes, Letitia McLean with the Army. Did we miss? I'm sure we have a certificate. We probably just, we tried to catch people on the way in. Let me make sure we announce our Shandra Judge, who's with the Army Reserve.
And Kristin, you can continue on with our community recognitions.
Yes. After the board voted last month to unanimously accept the facility's naming committee recommendation to name elementary number 12 after Jim and Linda Jacobs, it's truly my honor to recognize them tonight. The Jacobs family has demonstrated a profound and lasting commitment to both the Forney community and Forney ISD since making it through home in 1969. Collectively, their service spans more than 50 years, impacting the school district, their local church, and a multitude of civic organizations. Jim Jacobs was a highly regarded individual whose service extended from the battlefield to the local community. A decorated veteran, he served with the US Army during the Vietnam War where he earned both a Purple Heart and a Bronze Star. In recognition of his valor, he was later posthumously inducted into the Texas Veterans Hall of Fame. Within Forney, he contributed by serving on the city's Planning and Zoning Committee, leading as commander of the American Legion Forney Post 591, and dedicated his time as a deacon and teacher at First Baptist Forney. His commitment to student mentorship was evident when he became a founding member of Forney's inaugural Fellowship of Christian Athletes Chapter. Linda Jacobs dedicated 26 years of service to Forney ISD. Her career began as a teacher, and she steadily advanced through various administrative positions, including serving as an assistant principal at both the elementary and high school levels. She concluded her impactful career by retiring as the Assistant Superintendent for Accountability and Learning, a role where her leadership was instrumental in driving the district's overall success. The facility's naming committee made its selection after carefully reviewing hundreds of nominations submitted by the community. Ultimately, they chose the Jacobs for their truly incredible service rendered to Forney ISD and the broader community. Tonight, we'd like to recognize them, and tomorrow, we will honor them at a groundbreaking at 5:00 PM over in Los Lomas. Jim and Linda Jacobs Elementary will open in the fall of 2026. So tonight, we'd like to invite Ms. Jacobs and her family up for a photo.
Moving back on to the agenda here, we'll take it up with number seven, reports. Our first report this evening, Ms. Kristin Zastul, Chief of Communications, for our Comprehensive Safety and Wellness Update.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. In the fall of 2020, we began presenting the annual Comprehensive Safety and Wellness Plan each October, November, in the fall at our board meetings. For the fifth year in a row, we're wanting to provide an update to the safety nets for every child that we're continually adding and enhancing. There is a handout we provide on our website for parents at that link that has been updated with this year's information. We'll be taking a few items out of order on the handout based on which team or department oversees the initiative as we provide you with an update. In collaboration with our staff, students, and families, and community partners, our district and campus leaders, teams, and staff, we are working to provide services for the safety and wellness of all of our students. It's more than a plan. These are actions that are constantly working together and evolving to meet each of our students' needs. In Forney ISD, we believe in the net philosophy. As students learn and grow, they may fall, and that's our duty.
As students learn and grow, they may fall, and it's our duty to provide safety nets with a plan in place to help catch them and set them back on track for their plan and purpose. With almost 20,000 students in Forney ISD and each child having different needs, we can't do it alone. It takes the help of our community, all of our staff, parents, grandparents, guardians, families, churches, service organizations, businesses, all of us to build nets for our students. While there are many items listed as a part of our Comprehensive Safety and Wellness Plan, we understand that physical safety is always a top priority. We are thankful for our teachers, police, and administrators who continue to work tirelessly to provide a safe environment for our students. To support all of our efforts, we urge legislators to provide teachers, administrators, and police a change in law to provide additional consequences for disruptive and violent behaviors. While there were some changes this year, we still encourage more. Administrators and school-based law enforcement are limited by Chapter 37, the Texas Education Code, and the Penal Code as to the extent they can provide consequences and charges. Although the public wants us to share information on how students are disciplined, the law does not allow us to share that information. Due to the incidents involving minors and verbal laws, we are only allowed to notify parents of students involved in isolated incidents. However, in every instance, we prosecute students to the full extent of the law as well as administratively per the Student Code of Conduct, but we do have limitations. This time, I'd like to invite Epp Kim Worsak to continue with some more information.
Thank you, Kristen. Under the Penal Code, only students age 10 or older may have charges brought against them for certain offenses. In previous years, law enforcement was able to write citations for our students for fighting on campus. That statute was removed several years ago, and if two students fight, were to walk across the street and fight on city streets, they would receive citations. Our district officials have been working with Judge Tarnow, our judge in Precinct 2, to write summons for the students to appear in court where she has court-ordered classes for restoration and education covering topics such as anger management, mental health, and conflict resolution. In some cases, monetary fines have been implemented or restrictions being placed on students' driver's license. Per the Texas Education Code, students in foster care or students designated as homeless cannot be suspended. TEC and TEA have placed restrictions on the numbers of days, sorry, Kristen has my wrong script here. On the numbers of days, students can be suspended for specific incidents within, with a maximum of three days of suspension for each incident. Students under the age of six cannot be placed in DAP for most offenses. In order to maintain the safest environments, violent and disruptive behavior will not be tolerated in Forney. Fighting is unacceptable, and Forney ISD has a zero-tolerance policy for students who engage in fighting. Students will be assigned to DAP, and under the new bill from TEA, if a student makes a physical contact with a staff member during a fight or at any other time during the school day, the student may face expulsion. When our Student Code of Conduct or laws are broken, we will pursue all legal and disciplinary measures to the fullest extent. I'll now ask Chief Jason Saunders to continue.
Thank you, Kim. The Forney ISD Police Department, our district police officers work collaborating with school administrators and district personnel and responsible for many aspects of campus security and law enforcement. The police department is committing to hire a police officer for every campus. Currently, we have 31 sworn police officers, two with tentative start dates within the next couple of weeks, and we have four in various stages of background. Hopefully, they'll be here within the next month or so. That will give us a total of 37 with the several more that are in the interview phase at this time. After our extensive field training program has been completed, the remaining officers will be utilized for elementary campuses. With the shortage of equipment and police officers, it's hard to find, and we don't take that lightly. We try to hire the best for this district. Annually, the police department completes state-mandated training on mental health, legal updates, alert, SABA, and DPS investigative crash report reporting, among various other trainings. This summer, the police department completed partial audits, weekly door checks, updated standard response protocols and campus procedures, and trained staff members on state intrusion audits for all the campuses. In addition to Anta and Kalmese joining the Forney Independent, the Forney Independent School District Police Department to serve as the district's emergency operations, safety, and security director, we have also hired Natalie Kaiser as the coordinator for safety and security. They are responsible for many aspects of the safety and security, including the multi-hazard emergency operations plan and the Texas School Safety Center, safety audits. Campus security officers. At our high school, intermediate, and middle schools, we have enlisted a third-party source to provide security officers to protect the safety and welfare of the students in addition to uniform presence on our campuses. They actively patrol our campus, monitor student behavior, securing buildings and property, and helping and maintain order during our events. We also have a district security and safety committee. The district adopted the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocols for Emergency Response and the Standard Reunification Method per the recommendation of our Safety and Security Committee. We developed a community-wide collaboration with our first responders to strengthen our relationship and ensure the most efficient response in any emergency or crisis if that were to occur within the Forney Independent School District. Safety and Task Force. The Forney Independent School District also maintains a district safety task force. The charge of this team is to facilitate the development and district goals and initiatives to improve school safety, to identify current conditions and root causes, to respond to the needs of staff, students, and the community, to explore and further develop the safety conditions, and to propose recommendations to the superintendent and the board for future work. Community Safety Task Force. Government officials, school district administrators, representatives from law enforcement agencies in our community have formed a task force that meets regularly to solve community safety issues. One of the goals of this task force is to develop and strengthen partnerships with local safety agencies to engage in joint training, collaboration, and information sharing. Forney ISD also works with Kaufman County Crime Stoppers and has an anonymous reporting format for after-hours as well as our anonymous alerts that are available 24 hours a day. School safety and security grants have helped us provide the following for our campuses: bullet-resistant window film, Evolve weapons detection systems, and a silent panic alert system. Threat Assessment Management System has been implemented, excuse me, and it provides a multi-tiered support program or safety net for all students identified with being a threat or potential threat to themselves or others. As we all know, this has also been implemented in the state's system where our door checks are now implemented to go into. Our Evolve. The Forney Independent Safety Task Force made recommendations to add weapon detectives technology to some of our campuses. After thorough research and planning, we partner with Evolve, and we have implemented these detection systems within our high school, middle schools, intermediate, as well as our opportunity central.
A few more nets to ensure safety and wellness include Smart Tag System. Our Smart Tag System, Forney ISD uses this technology to provide parents and staff the ability to track all students who ride a bus to school and from school. Students can pick up, as they, students scan as they pick up and drop off. Each student is stamped with a time and a location for real-time tracking. Anti-bullying prevention. Forney ISD uses a comprehensive approach to strictly prohibit bullying and incorporates the Capturing Kids Hearts restorative practices and in-real-life curriculum district-wide. Information about Forney ISD's bullying prevention programs is available on the district website as well. Another program that we have is anonymous alerts. Through the anonymous alerts link and mobile app, students and parents can anonymously report any suspicious activity, bullying, and other student-related issues to a campus administrator or a campus officer. Random searches. To maintain a safe and secure learning environment, random security screenings are conducted to deter the possession of prohibited items and uphold the safety of all individuals on our campuses. Ensuring student safety is a fundamental responsibility of our campuses. A few of our health services programs. We partner with Good Side Health, which is a school med program. Through our partnership with Good Side Health, we're able to streamline student care and promote faster return to class following minor illnesses, such as a cold, a headache, or sore throat and such. With this program, students can have an immediate virtual doctor visit, including getting a prescription sent to their preferred pharmacy, all while at school and eliminating the need for a separate clinic visit. Our Student Health Advisory Committee, which is SHAC, our school board establishes a local school health advisory committee to assist the district in ensuring the local community values are reflected in the district's health education instruction. Our health clinic, which is on all of our campuses, our health services department employs registered nurses who practice under the medical direction of a medical doctor and follow FISC's policies to provide quality care on campuses for students, staff with chronic illnesses, along with providing first aid and emergency responses. And lastly, vision screenings with free eyeglasses. In partnership with the Lion Club, our school nurses help provide vision screenings and referrals to receive free eyeglasses from our Lions Club. Next, Ms. Robin Pierce will help us out.
Good evening. So we, so we employ district and campus students' crisis team. So anytime we have a crisis on any campus, we deploy our whole crisis team to that campus to help with counseling, with our students, for parents, for teachers. So we do that and have them there that bright and early that morning to have them ready, and we go through a process with them on debriefing. The second thing we have is our student support counselors. So we have 15, currently 15, student support counselors in the district. We also utilize through our student support counselors T Chat, which is a telehealth for behavioral concerns. So if our student support counselors can't get to every kid because we do have 15, we do utilize this. And so it is an online, parents give permission, and they do counseling sessions at school privately with a licensed professional counselor. So last year, we served 415 students through that counseling program through T Chat. And this year, we have already served 51 students through T Chat in addition to our student support counselors. So just a really good program that we can provide some of that help to our students. Mental health awareness. Of course, we have lots of mental health awareness through what we do with our guidance, guidance lessons at the campus, but also we do different mental health parent and student engagement activities that we invite all of our parents and students to throughout the year. Cultures are cultural, oh my goodness, I can't talk. Culture of Excellence Specialist. Our COEs currently work with our teachers to build capacity in the classroom for all of our behavior concerns and behavior management, classroom management in the classroom, but they also work with our future-ready milestones and making sure that we are implementing those milestones in K through 4 in our morning meetings that you see up here, that all of our pre-K through 4 actually get morning meetings, as well as our five-through, our four-through, or five-through-seven IRL classes, and then our principals' class. So we work through that with our IRL curriculum. So all of that kind of encompasses multiple things on this list, but how we support kids in that manner. And we also are continuing with Capturing Kids Hearts, but we've taken that a step further. And so in lieu of a Capturing Kids Hearts, we've created what we call the Pulse, and it really breaks down what we, what we hold dear in regards to capturing kids' hearts as long with, along with our Forney values. And it's a rubric base that we can ensure that those things are happening on the campus, that our Culture of Excellence Specialist help principals to make sure that we are hitting everything that comes with mental health, with engagement with students, for our milestones. So just pretty much everything on this list to ensure that our principals are meeting those standards and meeting those marks. And we also do character education. That's always been around, so we continue to do that. We have aligned, as of last year, we aligned every month so that every, every campus in the district is focusing on one thing every month so that we can support that as a district level, but also as our counselors. So we have the supports and resources for them. Guidance visits, we do track all of our guidance visits with our students to ensure that we are supporting them where they need at that campus. This provides us information to pull, we pull it every quarter to see what different sessions we need to bring in or send our counselors to to get training to make sure that we are adapt and we are ready for whatever's happening on that campus because each campus is different. So we look at those guidance visits to make sure that we're supporting our counselors and our campuses. Student engagement. We, you've probably seen it around, we are, that is a push. So just getting students involved, whether it's at the OC with our student engagement classes and our rec leagues, or whether on campuses, all of our campuses now have different clubs and organizations on their campus, starting at Kinder to 12th grade to help keep our students engaged. And then the last thing on the list is securely notifications, which is just something that we, we monitor. So in any student search or through a Google Doc, anytime we see a word that is flagged, it goes directly to all of our counselors and to our Director of Counseling so that we can get on that very quickly and reach out to a parent or student if there's any concern. So, thank you.
As a district, we strive to keep our kids safe, not only in the classroom, but in the digital world as well. So we are excited to announce that for the eighth year, we are a Common Sense District. The Common Sense Curriculum teaches students how to properly use the digital platform, teaches them ethics, also how to make good decisions, how to see when they're trying to figure out how they're being scammed, those types of things. Each of our media specialists is a certified Common Sense, has a Common Sense certification, and they teach those lessons through our library times. In addition, all of our Forney ISD employees who have access to student data have to take an annual cybersecurity training. That is a requirement at the beginning of each school year. Those are targeted at the most common types of cybersecurity attacks to ensure that we keep our data secure in Forney ISD. We have added some additional perimeter improvements throughout the district to ensure that our envelopes are as secure as possible at each of our buildings. In addition, we add and maintain all of our camera systems each year. We have a very robust camera system, both inside our common areas in our hallways as well as outside our school buildings at each of our campuses from elementary all the way through high school. We do maintain a keyless badge system that allows us to know who gains entry to each building when and very quickly can remove access to anyone if access needs to be removed. We also have cameras on each of our buses. Every bus in Forney ISD does have multiple cameras on it to help maintain safety on those buses. And finally, each of our campuses has secure entryways and vestibules. They all have iPhone access where the front desk can verify who's being let into the building prior to them being let in. This allows us to keep a very secure entry to each building as well. Thank you.
And continuing it with this, just to share, we do work with a lot of our community partners as well, everything from providing clothing assistance to Back-to-School Resource Fair, our Angel Drive which is going on right now. Can't we just finish Pack the Pantry as well? We work with a lot of churches and nonprofits to build relationships that also serve our families when there is an emergent need, such as a fire or medical diagnosis, whether that be a student's family or a staff's family. And our parent and communication alerts as well through Parent Square that we brought on board two years ago, and translation features, call notifications, monthly newsletters, anything we can to try to keep our community informed. And we also build relationships with local agency communications teams around the city and the county as well. And of course, our Forney Family Campaign continues along with our collaborative meetings with PTOs, boosters, our church partners and nonprofit agencies. In addition, we also have Raptor as our background check system for our volunteers. And we are really proud to move over to this a couple of years ago, this system, because not only does it provide the initial background check when we background check a volunteer, it actually does a monthly recheck every month. So if I sign up for 12 months, every single month, I'm getting another check to make sure so that way we can keep our campuses as safe as possible. So as you can see, there's a lot of initiatives over a lot of overlapping departments because we try to provide as many nets for our students as we can in many areas. And we're always researching ways to improve and to add additional supports as well. But again, it's more than a plan. It's a lot of actions that are constantly working together and evolving to meet the needs of our students, but it's effective when we all work together as a community. So our team is here if you have any questions about any of the things that we shared this evening. So our team is here if you have any questions about any of the things that we shared this evening.
Thank you very much, team. Appreciate that presentation. Moving on to item B, our quarterly investment report. Mr. John Chase, Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight's investment report is through the quarter ending September 30. We had $286 million on deposit at the end of the quarter. We earned an average rate of return of between four and 4.4%. Those funds were on deposit at our local depository, Citi Bank, or in one of our three investment pools. The distribution of those deposits are in the pie chart. We had about 56% of our deposits were in our construction fund for the buildings that we're currently constructing. Another $88 million or so was about 31% was in the construction fund, and then the final 38 million was in the debt service account. Total interest earnings for the quarter was 2.6 million. And if you have any questions about the report, be happy to answer them.
I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Then moving on to item C, Attendance Zone Modification Report. Ms. Kim Morsak, Associate Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'm going to start tonight's presentation just with a quick demographic update. We did get our Q3 information from Zonda, Rocky Gardner and Zonda Demographics. This first slide is from Q2. We didn't get an update of this from Q3, but we were still the seventh fastest-growing school district in the DFW area based on annual starts at Q2. This now starts the Q3 information. So our starts are down from last year. You can see in Q1, we came in a little bit stronger than 24, but then the starts have reduced in Q2 and Q3. The closings subsequently were down in Q1, but up in Q2, and then down again in Q3. So we do have a lot of vacant developed lots and a lot of inventory. So depending on what happens with interest rates and the economy, we will either, we could see a lot of closings coming up for the remainder of this year. This just kind of shows a little bit of our mobility. The dark blue line shows our incoming students. If you look back at 2223, that's where we had the huge, huge boom, so big spike. We had over 3,000 students enter the school district. Very, very similar numbers from 2024 and 2025, and then very similar numbers to our leavers as well. So we're averaging about 3,000 new students and about 2,000 students leaving, which gives us a net of about 1,000 students this school year. This shows our future housing overview. All of the green developments are active housing developments, and then the yellows are futures. That bright yellow giant thing up north is that Maraki up on Mann, the Mann property. That's a big development coming. And you can see, we still have about 32 active subdivisions in Forni Building. 16,900 single-family lots in the district, and there's groundwork on about 430 lots, just in three subdivisions alone. So the three districts that have the most current annual starts are Griffin is leading, and you'll see that here in a second, followed by Crosby, and then very closely past that is Dewberry. But we have growth all over the district with the exception of Blackburn, just because of the way that that zone's in an older part of Wimble Farms, and then Lewis. This is the 10-year forecast by Gray Level. You can see he has this here at 19.510. That is not our snapshot number. We're closer to 19.7, I think 19.697, something like that is probably where we're going to end up at. But he got this file prior to snapshot, which as a reminder, was on Halloween, the 31st. So the numbers are a little bit off, a couple hundred kids, let's call it, but we're still looking at a little over 30,000 by 2035. So he has done a different type of 10-year forecast this year for us. He's done a low, a mid, and a high projection, and then just given some caveats at the bottom as to what those three projections are based on. So slow in housing and slow closings, there has been a reduction in birth rates. Some other options for families, gives the low projections. If you go over to the high projections, they do keep saying that mortgage rates are going to go down. So if that were to happen, kindergarten enrollment continues to keep pace, which it's doing in Forni right now. You can look more towards the high projections. Once again, these are about 100 to 200 kids off based on snapshots. They'll be adjusted at Q4. Just some key takeaways from the Zonda presentation. We've grown 5,000 students in the last five years. Our starts and closings are trending a little bit below 2024, but we should stay steady with over 800 homes in inventory. We have about 880 homes in active inventory and 4,000 lots available with 16, almost 17,000 planned futures. And we're still projected to enroll over 25,000 students by 203031. So that leads us into our annual Attendance Zone Modification Planning. As a reminder, we do this every year. Obviously, we just dedicated a new building to Jim and Linda Jacobs, so we will be opening a new school. Anytime you open a new building, you have to zone students into it, so you do have to have a rezone. So this attendance modification is for K4 or pre-K4, depending on how you look at it, only. We are not doing any change in zones for our intermediate or middle school or our high school students. So this is an elementary rezone only. So just as a reminder for the board, the rezoning goals, optimizing space to ensure that we are using our buildings to the best and fullest extent. Make our best effort to prepare for future growth. It's hard here, because you just never know what quite is going to happen. Try to keep our students at the closest campus to where they live. Use natural boundary lines where possible, and then address potential program overcrowding, which is one of the things we have to look at tonight. So we look at our current enrollment. We look at our growth projections from our demographer that I just showed you. We evaluate our current facilities. The board sets rezoning goals. Our demographer proposes a plan, which he has done. We receive community feedback. We'll present the plan to the, first plan to the board tonight. Then after all the feedback, if the board asks us to, we'll adjust the plans as needed, and then we'll adopt the plan. And I'll show you the exact timeline at the end of the presentation. This is our current forecast prior to opening Jacobs. So as you can see, Griffin is well above capacity right now. It has 900 capacity. That means every classroom is zoned perfectly, and everyone is filled to the exact amount. You can fit 900 kids. Right now, he's projecting 930, with 970 the next year. It can't hold that capacity. Willett is showing 880. That's pretty full, so we need a little relief there. They can only last one year if the projections are exactly correct. And then Wilson is an interesting one, because we have to control the English side, and he can't project what the Spanish side of dual looks like. So this is best guess, but he doesn't grow that program. It's only grown through cohort. So we know that that building is currently at capacity, and we're having to limit some of our participation at the kindergarten level if we don't do something for that program. So this is the proposed option one rezone plan, and there's really two places I need to highlight for you. The first one is the bottom right-hand corner, that big green area. That green plus the little beige-y pink right next to it was the entire Willett zone. So I think you can maybe see if I have my mouse here, but this was, and I'll show you a close-up in a second. So this entire bottom right-hand corner was all Willett. We are now proposing that the green portion become Jacobs Elementary and the beige become Willett. So this is kind of what the Willett zone would then look like. So we take that entire area and shrink it down to Helm's Trail to 2012 is kind of the boundary on that. It's a very dense area right there with Gateway, and so that would become the Willett zone. And then Jacobs would be all the rest of the screen. So that's the first portion. The second portion is this little red square I have up here. I showed you Griffin was completely out of room. We do have to find an area to zone out of Griffin. And so this small area here would be proposed to be zoned out of Griffin and into Crosby. So those are the two main areas of the main rezone. Any questions on that portion before I continue? The second part is a different approach to dual language. So as I said, Wilson is at capacity because of that program. So we are looking at having two dual-language, pre-K for dual-language campuses. One will be at Wilson, and the second will be at the new campus, Jacobs Elementary. So any student or family on the English or Spanish side of dual that's in that beige-ish green color at the top would stay at Wilson. Anybody in the blue color under this plan would be zoned down to Jacobs. Both Wilson and Jacobs will have pre-K through four Spanish dual-language program. That's on the English and Spanish side. And we will be able to, using this plan, provide transportation for students on both the English and Spanish side, as long as they meet the transportation requirements and live in the zone. Obviously, if they live right next to the school, they wouldn't be transportation-eligible. But just like any other student, if they're eligible for transportation, we'd be able to provide it in this plan. This is what happens to the projection whenever you do those two plans, the dual-language plan and then that one rezone. It gets us out to 2829. At that point, Criswell, Crosby, and Griffin, all three are getting pretty close to capacity, but we do have some plans for potential ways to deal with that in 2829. But it does get us through the next two years pretty nicely, with really nice numbers, those two campuses. So this is the timeline for rezone. So we're at the top one, the Monday, November 10th board meeting. This is first reading of the plan. November 10th through the 30th, we will be asking for feedback from the public. We will have two information sessions. November 13th will be targeted towards our dual-language families. It'll be provided in English and Spanish. And then November 17th is another, anyone's able to go to either one. But the first one, we will provide in English and Spanish. And then November 17th, we'll have our second session. Thursday, November 20th is a special called meeting. That'll be the public hearing. And then proposed board adoption on December 15th. Then once the plan, whatever plan we approve has been approved by the board, we will send an email to any parents and families who are impacted by the rezone. We'll post all of the maps to the website. And then January, February, we'll do mascot voting for Jacobs Elementary's mascot. And then Michelle will go through the staff transfer process as we staff that campus. So I believe that is the end of the rezone presentation.
Moving on then to item D, Notice of Intruder Detection Findings. Mr. Jason Saunders, Chief of Forni ISD Police Department.
Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, board members. Top priority of the Forni Independent School District in the state of Texas is keeping students and staff safe every day. Each month, we will update the board of any intruder audits completed by TEA at one or more of our campuses. The audits test whether the campus is accessible to unauthorized individuals. This audit, conducted as part of Governor Abbott's School Safety Directives for all school systems following the tragedy in Uvalde, seeks to help districts identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked. The audit provides us with the opportunity to create a safer learning environment for our students and staff. We are working closely with the district's School Safety Security Committee to ensure that we are training all of our staff and securing our doors for the protection of everyone at our campuses. The support from the state in conducting the intruder detection audits is just one of the many actions that we are taking to ensure our schools are safe. We know that this work does not end, and we appreciate the board's support. We acknowledge that parents and community members are likely very interested in the details of the audit results. However, it is in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information with the broader public, as it could lead to a compromising and important campus security information. Specific details of the intruder detection audit were discussed in an executive session with the District Safety and Security Committee. The Forni Independent School District is committing to providing a safe and secure learning environment for all of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Saunders. Appreciate that very much. Next is item eight, Public Forum. No one signed up to address the board tonight. Moving on to item nine, Consent Agenda. Item A is approved minutes from October 6th special meeting and October 6th regular meeting. Item B is approved the budget amendment. Item C is approved district and campus performance objectives. Item D is the VU Scholarship MOU. Item E approved teacher of the MOU. And item F, the ratified payment to reform America. We can take action on them separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda collectively as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Mudiya. Do I have a second? Ms. Bateman, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Item number 10, Consideration Possible Approval of Employee Retention Stipends. Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As boards are aware, over the last 10 years, I guess, we started this process, or this program, in November 2016. That's the first time that we had retention pay in the district. And what we started at that time was, we gave 1% of the pay grade midpoint to all full and part-time employees that were employed on February 1st from the prior school year and were making, maintained continuous employment through the current school year up through the time when we make retention payments, which this year would be November 21st. Just the other key points here is we did budget one and a half million dollars in the budget, and we developed it this summer, and it was adopted by the board. We're estimating at this time, if we move forward with the payment that we're, we'd be spending about 1.3 million. Teachers, full-time teachers would receive $707. And so that being said, our recommendation is, is that we would move forward with the retention pay as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have further comments?
You know, it's always a blessing to be able to provide a little something extra for our staff and just wanted to commend the board for continuing this. I can't believe it's been 10 years since we started this, and it's pretty exciting to be able to do this for 10 straight years. So there's, we would recommend tonight that you do adopt a 1% retention stipend to reward those staff for sticking with our Forni family and Forni ISD.
Board, you've heard the administration. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second? Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Mr. Chase, I think you're up for the next one. Consideration Possible Approval Resolution Casting Votes for a member or members of the Coffin Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
As boards are aware, last month, we made our nominations to the chief appraiser for members that we'd like to include on the ballot for nominate, or for actually voting for and approving, casting our votes for the members once that ballot got assembled. As it turns out, the two members that we nominated, those are also the only two members that were nominated by the other taxing jurisdictions that are able to make nominations. And so you have before you a ballot tonight that has Danny Kirby and Bruce Wood's name on it. And we are selecting two members to serve on the board. So assuming each one of these members receive at least one vote, they will be elected for another term of the, on the Coffin Central Appraisal Board Directors. And so we have 619 votes to cast tonight, and the board can cast those in any manner that they see fit.
Thank you very much. Dr. Terry.
We have taken the liberty to provide some motion language for you, and go ahead and do that math. So you're welcome to use the math that we provided, or use your own, but that split vote would allow for those two members to continue to serve on the Coffin County Appraisal District Board.
Board, you've heard the explanation. Does that have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approves the resolution to cast 310 votes for Danny Kirby and 309 votes for Bruce Wood, serves members of Coffin Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second? Mr. Johnson? Dr. Adam Mudiya? Board, you heard the motions. Got a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item number 12, Ms. Morsak, Consideration Possible Approval of Construction Bids.
Thank you, Dr. Ferris. Mr. Ferris, thank you, doctor. Board, I'm actually going to ask Jeff Fisher, who's also not a doctor, to present the construction bids for us this evening. Jeff?
Also, don't play one on TV. And I didn't stay at Holiday Inn Express last night either, but it's all that. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, it's good to be with you as always when I get a chance to get in front of you. I do appreciate it. The district took bids on the, or received, I'm sorry, competitive seal proposals. on the OC Academy expansion, the new golf facility and aquatic center expansion on Thursday, October the 9th. And since that time, Gallagher has gone through and reviewed the proposals received and put together the total budget for the project, or projects, I should say. And we come to you tonight asking for approval of the contractors and the budgets as presented. The total for the bid package for the aquatic facility and the new golf facility is $23,676,688. That's to be funded through the savings from the 2019 bond and the general fund. And then the second project, the OC Academy expansion, that total project budget is $61,708,992, and that project is funded through the 2022 bond proceeds. So we would recommend that the contracts and budgets be approved as presented. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any other questions from the board? I hear none. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Pretty exciting times in Forni ISD all around tonight, and this is another one of those. So we'd recommend approving the bids tonight as presented, so that we can get to digging, right, Jeff?
That's right.
All right.
Board, you've heard the recommendations and the explanations. Do I have a motion, please?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the construction bids as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhalter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Item 13 is closed session. It was taken earlier. Moving on to item 14, consideration possible approval regarding the employment of professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the employment of professional contract personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Ferris.
Ms. Dobbs, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Item number 15, consider approval of request for sanctions of educator certification to submit it to the State Board of Educators to employment and abandonment of contract. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move the board hereby find Destiny Radcliffe has abandoned her employment with the Forni ISD without good cause and direct the administration to take the necessary steps to seek sanctions against her educator certificate.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Eda Mudiya, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Consider approval of contracts for personal services. There's no contracts to approve there tonight on item 16. Item 17, consider approval of letter of support for foreign trade zone status. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion for a letter of support for foreign trade zone status as presented.
Ms. Bateman has a motion. I have a second.
Sir?
Mr. Regan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item 18, there is no action. Item 19, Dr. Terry?
Thank you, sir. It is a busy week in Forni ISD because of a lot of the successes you heard last week. And so we just keep moving forward. Tomorrow night, just wanted to remind everybody that we wear your coats, because I think it's going to be a little chilly, but tonight's evening at 5:00 sharp, we will start, because I believe the sun goes down at 5:27, Kristen tells me. So we'll have the Jacobs Elementary groundbreaking out on site. So if you need directions, take a ride at the Amazon and keep going. But we'll help you with that. And so we're really excited about getting that project officially broken ground, but it's already up and moving. We also have this week on Tuesday night, at the same time, down in Temple, Texas. I want to invite everybody to head down there to support the regional finalist. North Forni volleyball team is playing Tomball for a state bid. So cheer them on, having a great season. And then this Friday, making history in Forni. Good thing we have two stadiums. Mr. Fisher, thank you for that. Because we have two home playoff games. That is a rarity. Forni High School will play at 7:00 versus Namen Forest, and North Forni will begin their game at 7:30 versus Saxon High School. And then last reminder, on November the 20th, we do have a special call meeting. So would invite all of you to attend that as well. Mr. Ferris, it's going to be a busy fall, almost feels like spring. All right.
It's busy all the way to the end. Any other comments from the board? I hear none. Then it's 8:15, and we'll call this meeting adjourned.